Okay. All right, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is June 11th at 11:00 a.m., and I will ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, we are here for the 4H and Extension Service District Budget Committee meeting. Our first course of action is to elect a Budget Committee Chair. So, I will entertain a nomination for a Budget Committee Chair, who will then take over the remainder of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, full payback, maybe? I'll make a motion to make Jay Trost our Budget Chair for 4H.
Oh, died up for lack of a second, okay?
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Nope, all right, well, we'll call for the question. Commissioner Coker.
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger.
Yes.
And I as well, okay. Thank you for putting together this itinerary, this, appreciate that. Next up is the presentation of the Budget Message.
Do we want to do introductions of our other committee members?
For, yes, please.
Thank you for your budget committee member. Janice Gouper, Budget Committee Member.
So, in a normal scenario, and we can do this real quickly if you'd like to, we can set up the table with the microphone for the Budget Committee Members to sit at, if you'd like.
I can talk while I'm with everybody.
Well, we're gonna need a microphone regardless, so that the public can hear what you're saying. So, it looks like Natasha's already reading my mind. This is a real easy process, we'll just roll that right in front of you two ladies. And you will have a microphone. And a stand. And... There we go, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
You ready?
Yeah.
I'll introduce myself as well first. Hi, I'm Margie White, I was about to say House. Recently changed my last name. I am the Budget Officer for Curry County Extension Service in Curry County. I am also the Administrative Office Manager with a split position in Family Community Health. And I will read the Budget Message, so bear with me, because I'm just going to read this whole statement to you. The Curry County 4H Extension Service District was established in 1986 to provide local funding for OSU Extension Programs. The district is authorized to collect property taxes at a rate of, or a permanent rate, of 0.1021 per $1,000 of assessed value, supporting personnel, programming, and operations through a partnership with Oregon State University. A total of $405,850 in taxes was estimated to be received for fiscal year '26. Additionally, we estimated $15,000 in previously levied taxes and $2,255 in interest. The district begins the year with a fund balance of $1,046,303, due in part to underspending in fiscal year '23 and '24 during periods of family medical leave and staff vacancies. Total resources for fiscal year '26 budget is $1,469,408. The fiscal year '26 budget reflects a return to full staffing and increased investment in programming and outreach. The proposed budget supports a fully-staffed office, including a planned increase in the Master Gardener Program Assistant Position from .5 to .8 FTE, in response to program growth and in addition of a new educational greenhouse. Total appropriations include $262,582 for personal services, which includes .7 FTE Administrative Office Manager, .8 FTE Master Gardener Program Assistant, 1.0 FTE 4H Education Program Assistant. And $141,000, $141,150 for materials and services, supporting programs and operations, volunteer coordination, and professional development. To remain flexible, $300,000 is reserved for unallocated project funds and $31,000 for contingency. A projected unappropriated ending fund balance of $734,176 ensures stability going into fiscal year '27. Total requirements for fiscal year '26 is $1,469,408. The district contracts with OSU Extension to deliver local services. Funds are managed by Curry County and reimbursed to OSU quarterly based on actual expenses. OSU tracks and reports expenditures and program-generated revenue separately for transparency and oversight. On behalf of Curry County 4H and Extension Service District, I would like to thank the Budget Committee Members and the broader community for their continued trust and support. We remain committed to delivering meaningful, hands-on programming that reflects local priorities and strengthens our community in the year ahead.
Thank you, Margie.
Yep.
I'd also just like to, so everybody who's watching can introduce Wiley for just a moment, so they know who's standing behind you.
My boss.
Yes.
For the record, Wiley Thompson, I'm the Regional Director on the coast, so I cover six of our coastal counties, supporting all of our extension programs, and just teammate of Margie's. And appreciate her work on this budget, putting it together, the partnership we have with our county staff, we couldn't do it without them. And of course, our Budget Committee Members, citizen involvement and oversight is critical to surety of our financial processes. And also our elected officials.
Well, thank you. And it is obviously really nice when you have somebody as tenured as Margie running the ship, makes, I'm sure, your life much easier.
Couldn't do it without her.
So, okay, so... Do the Budget Committee have any questions for Margie after the message?
No, Margie's been very good about keeping us well-informed, letting us know exactly why the budget was looking the way it did. And so, we're very, I'm very comfortable with the budget the way it is.
I'm comfortable with it, too, yeah. I noticed a few pretty major changes, but the reasoning behind them supports those changes, so I'm good.
Agreed. And the main, the main stays are all in place, you're just adding on, is that correct? I mean, if I were to give it a big summary?
Yeah, so, we did have vacancies, and so that's where the major shift, and you'll see like the actuals versus what's actually in the budget this year and in fiscal year '25. I was basically the lone man in the building for quite some time, and now we have a fully-staffed building. And then this year, as many of you already know, there's that new learning, the Educational Greenhouse down at the Gold Beach Community Center. So that's a brand-new community space for educating both adults as well as youth. And programming for that will require additional staffing time. And so, right now, our Master Gardener EPA is at .5 FTE. And so, we're not even putting him at full-time, it's .8, and that'll just allow for some oversight of programming to happen in that space.
And, but the major, your major offerings, your major service offerings that you have historically all done, those are all staying in place. The gardening is just an expansion of those services, is that correct?
Correct. Right now, with the information that we have on hand, all programming is to occur as anticipated. Did you want to talk about federal funding potential implications?
And Wiley, you can lift that microphone up.
Sure. Everyone might know that there, you know, there's, you know, there's really two circles that we focus on. There's that, that circle that's pretty tight and close to us, and those are things we can control and influence. And, you know, looking at, you know, Curry's vision, you know, safe communities, resilient economy, affordable lifestyles, natural beauty, and like opportunities for our youth and our, and, you know, people in their midlife and people in kind of later life. Those are things that we can influence with the budget at the local level. Then we have, we have some state funding. The state funding is looking pretty good this year, and we know there's challenges with the state, because at what's happening at the federal level, if less money flows to the state, then the state has to make choices, because things that were otherwise paid for federally, the state now has to pick that up or forego it. And then that starts to impact everyone. Like, and I won't even, it's not germane to mention programs and what have you. What we do know is that the RC grant folks, who do like Shop the Dock and Eat Oregon Seafood, Eat Local, their funding was approved in the March continuing resolution, but has not been signed and released. So they still have funding for a while, so the money is there. It's like someone has taken a check to the bank.
And held it.
But they're just like, we just want the teller to cash it so we can use it.
Right.
It's there, it's just not in usable form. But what we also know is that our nutrition education program, so we know those as SNAP Ed. SNAP really has three components. It's the benefits that people use, and we see that as like EBT. I think there was like, was it Oregon Trail the Card? So that's something we don't really deal with. There's the administrative piece that the states have to manage that. And there's the nutrition education piece, which is, where we go into schools and we talk to kids about, you know, this is what eating healthy looks like. So eat, eat things that look as close as they are to their natural state, like whole grains, fruits and vegetables, dairy, you know, proteins. We talked about wash your hands. You know, every mom should appreciate wash your hands, right? Where you get to the table. We talk to them about being active. So put down that screen and get outside and play. We also have programs that are, that are sponsored and done in partnership with the National Arthritis Foundation, Walk with Ease, Better Bones in Balance. And those are run through the, our nutrition education, our SNAP Ed piece, that the state administers, offers the grant to OSU. And I'll just tell you, by the way, that has been the longest and largest grant in Oregon State University history, is the SNAP Ed piece. That extension then takes out to 36 counties. And we also go into the food banks. We know many of our communities are, have some, some challenges with food security, especially when you live like in a food desert, and you have to go miles and miles to get to a grocery store. So we'll work at food banks, we'll work in farmers' markets to help people stretch their SNAP benefits. In fact, in some cases, we, we create partnerships where they can double their benefits and steer them towards, you know, whole grains, you know, vegetables, fruits in season. And what we have been told, and what is the current reality, is the nutrition education piece, which was in the farm bill, which is then moving forward, has been zeroed out. So, that part, which comes to us. So we are funded with state dollars, federal dollars, county dollars, which we're talking about here today, and then grant funds.
Yeah.
Which come in, like Margie's gotten some grants here locally, and others get bigger grants. That piece has been zeroed out.
Okay.
So if not brought in, we will see all of those activities go away.
And, sorry, just a quick...
So we can't control, that's not, that's it, that's the circle of concern.
Completely understood.
So we work on circle of control.
Sure.
So maybe some grants, maybe some partnerships to help with that.
And those, just to reiterate for the public, those, those programs that may be, that are in jeopardy.
Yes.
Of not being funded are...
So, C-grant is, is a concern. That's the check that we're just waiting to be cashed.
Yep.
The SNAP Ed piece.
But the C-grant provides funding for what programs?
Our C-grant folks, so that's our...
Three local positions.
Three local positions.
Okay, okay. So FTEs?
Yep.
Okay.
Actual FTEs.
Got it.
Yes, the SNAP Ed has a part of our 4H piece.
Okay.
So, so M is a combination of our 4H and also getting in schools and working with youth on, on being active, eating healthy, just healthy living. And then, we also have a person who's a nutrition educator that has Curry and Coos County, that comes down and does workshops in Brookings, here at the library. And so, that position is almost in a whole.
Got it, okay.
And I don't, I'm not really sure what we can do with the whole position. The ones that are parts, we have better opportunities to get maybe some grants.
Can I, I just want a little clarification.
Yes, sir.
What does C-grant do down here, Curry County?
Oregon C-grant? So we, actually, there's a couple of positions. We have our Coastal Hazard Person, those Hazard Education, has worked with folks on hazard mitigation. Some cities have reached out, you know, like, you know, doing beach grass to, to work with coastal erosion. The tsunami awareness that you see, that's, that's a big C-grant program. We have the, was it the Dock Walks?
I have them here, so Shop the Docks.
Shop the Dock handouts that were done.
I love the documents that I put together, too, as an overview of what all of our programs have really done for the year. Miranda Gray is our in-house C-grant person, and she's Coastal Water Resources. And so, Miranda is in-house doing research, doing community education. And her big publication this year was harvesting rainwater. She's done educational pieces about that, not just with our Master Gardeners, but throughout the community as well. The Coastal Community Development, that's one that I got to talk to, learn about quite in-depth the other day. And that's a really neat program where they're, they're taking folks from C-grant, coming here and coordinating with people in our courts, and creating tours for visitors, for people interested in finding out how operations work down there. And directly interacting with the fishermen on the boats down there. And they're bringing it back this year, so I'll send all of you the flyer, but there's a couple more of those Shop the Docks coming up this year as well. And it's a way to kind of understand that piece of the economy, and also provide some education. And then Wiley talked about coastal hazards. And so, those two, Jamie Doyle, if you look on the stat sheet here, and Felicia, they are not in-house in Curry County, but they serve our county as well.
The Hazard Person has the whole coast. Jamie Doyle is Coos and Curry, and then Miranda's right here. She also is a community educator for our watersheds. So she'll look at not only, you know, like wells and, and community water systems, but also making sure people understand, like, are your septic systems working right? Because you don't want to pollute our watersheds, because that gets into our coastal waters. Amanda Gladix, who will have a coastal impact, has been working with our Fisherman First Aid, training our, training our fishermen to be essentially first responders on their boat, to provide that, that immediate lifesaving actions, so that they can provide that aid before that, that H66 gets out there and pulls an injured person off the ship. We know that that care can make the difference. And then also, they work with the Whale Entanglement Group, working with the nearshore fishing fleet to help ensure that, like, say whale don't get caught on crab pots. And the fishermen, we've seen them be, they're very invested in that, because we don't want the, they don't want the fishing season shut down because a whale gets caught on a crab pot. So if they see whales, they, they report right away. And, and they, they talk about, like, how can we improve our gear to not have species interactions? You know, keep the pots away from the whales, whales away from the pots, whatever works best.
Sure.
So, they're really great programs.
They are, and they come with a package of being a part of the Extension Service District, because that budget helps, has had the infrastructure to house that operation. And then they come with their own self-sustaining budget to run those programs here. That's the real benefit of, we're talking about, what we're talking about today here. Like, they get that tiny piece of like, you know, they've got an office, they've got the computers and the things. They need to operate all of the rest of that, the package that comes along with Extension Service.
The C-grant, we, we pay nothing for C-grant. They, they are really good at getting grants. Amanda has gotten a fellow for, for two years that is going into high schools and piloting a program on the North Coast that we'd like to replicate all along the coast, about workforce development, training high schoolers to, getting them trained to work on ships, getting them gear, getting their first, their specific boat first aid lifesaving training, so that when they graduate, if they choose, they can, they can walk up to, you know, a boat captain, that boat captain sees a person that they feel comfortable and excited about getting on their boat.
So, just something in the purview of our, it could be an opportunity in the future.
Yes, sir.
That you may want to explore, the possibility of, is... I've really pushing the school district to start a lifeguarding program as a vocation opportunity in the spring. The Brookings Pool is, had, this year was open year-round, which provided an opportunity to do that. And now that it's under kind of a nonprofit's operating functions, they plan to keep it open in a much longer season, which could provide some more opportunities for those types of activities. And the other thing that they had brought was, they had the Wildland Firefighters provide a course in the spring for youth to become certified wildland firefighters for the summer. Which, I don't, so I don't know if there's a tie-in to assist in bringing some of our Central and North County youth into that fold. But if there is, and there's a way we can help try to, I, I don't know if, if it's even in the wheelhouse of the OSU Extension, and, but if it is, it would be really neat to explore.
Specific to those, are you talking about including ourselves in something broader of, like, internship-related within like different agencies within the county?
Right. And/or helping to organize the educational opportunities.
Yeah, okay.
You know, for, especially for our, our Central and North County youth, you know? I think if we can somehow utilize some of the resources that have been opened up to us, you know, in that framework of...
Those are spaces and conversations I'd love to be invited to.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have a fire team that is engaged with folks in that sphere and youth education. Workforce development is a peer of extension at the national level that, that we, we have, I believe, an obligation to engage, especially in our rural communities.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to beat on the, the drum too much of dollars, because often we make it so much about dollars and less about impact. But I, I do want to share, because we are, you know, hopefully will approve a budget, and that has a lot, a lot of discussion about dollars. But the budget that we are talking about here, when approved, is connected to an intergovernmental agreement. And that, that is, that agreement allows that, that budget to be approved and then spent. And with that, when the funding comes in, every dollar approved brings in $2.50 into the county from federal grant and state funds. And that's, that's a decent return. $1 brings in $2.5, you know, given current markets and any kind of investments. Without that, those dollars don't come in. And every, every dollar spent, approved here, though the OSU actually is the bank for disbursement and pay on that, none of those dollars are ever spent at OSU, or OSU doesn't...
Or they offer them here.
Doesn't...
We only bill for what we use.
But they're, none of them are actually spent.
Right.
Yes.
They're just the...
They, they pay mortgages in this town, they buy gas in the town. They pay for salaries of, of the staff in this town.
They're not charging administrative costs for overseeing the accounts.
There, there is nothing that OSU gets. None of it is my salary, none of it is my mileage, that comes from state funds and, and actually federal funds of the Smith-Leaver Act. So, I just wanted to make sure that's clear, because that, that has come up at a few meetings.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's important that the community knows that the money that they are investing here is staying here. It's not going to Salem or Corvallis.
Right, every dollar spent in these orders, right here in the county. And I'm not saying that we, that there's some misinformation occasionally in this, in this world with, you know, social media and such.
Hey, if it's on the internet, it's true, Wiley.
Never happened in Curry.
We all live here.
Other counties, yes, never in Curry. But just in case.
Well, is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Margie, you were talking just briefly about the Master Gardener. You're at, you're at .5 now, possibility of moving to .8.
Yes, that's within this budget.
Right. So, the, the comment that you made was that you're delaying moving in that direction because of a risk?
I don't believe, did I say we were delaying?
That's what I understood, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, that, yeah, I definitely didn't mean to say that if, if that's how it came out. So, we, we have our Master Gardener currently at .5, and this budget proposes an increase to .8. And that is primarily to help serve that new space and ensure that programming and operations in that space can be fully supported in a way that allows them to be successful. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, next, I will ask if there's any public comment. I do not have any public comment cards, but that does not mean that somebody did not fill one out. Certainly.
So, I'd still welcome, like, they don't have...
Yes, you can come up, please just state your name and address, and...
I don't want to creep on you.
I will say, I'm going to, not that it is pertinent to the scenario, but I will read this disclaimer. Public comments are designated for any member of the public who wishes to speak on any issue related to Curry County. Please be advised that the comments that are made by these individuals reflect their personal opinions and have not been verified factually. Comments directed towards county personnel, or in this case, OSU Extension or 4H personnel, will not be tolerated in this forum. We encourage anyone with personal-related concerns, personnel-related concerns, to address them privately after the meeting.
My name's Tiffany Summers. My address is 31976 Indian Hills Loop, Gold Beach, Oregon, 97444. I didn't plan on speaking, so please forgive me, I'm not a public speaker, and I'm already nervous. And I, really, I'm only here, I am a volunteer with a club here in the 4H organization. I've been a volunteer and a club leader for, club leader for two years now, volunteer for Going on Seven. Thank you to the Curry County 4H, it's a huge benefit to our community. My daughter was one who received a scholarship graduating this year, so it's a great organization, and we value it immensely. My ask and my, my public, and again, I apologize if this isn't the correct forum by any means, I would just love to see a larger partnership between the county, the fairgrounds, and the 4H programs, specifically livestock and the 4H shooting sports. Those two parts of the 4H organization are the largest in our county. We have, I think, 88 kids, about 50/50 in each. I am on the livestock side of things, and the value, and speaking of, you know, the dollars and the impact, without the dollars and the partnership between the county and the 4H program, going back into, again, specifically those livestock programs, we can't have an impact with these kids. So again, my ask is, when it comes down to this in consideration, I would love to see some larger sponsorships or partnerships with the centers, the pavilions, the equipment, the things that go along with getting our kids, those livestock animals down in there. I mean, we have, on average, probably way off-base here, I don't know, 70 animals down there during the fair, and the equipment is, you know, the facilities aren't up-to-date, and we are struggling. And I think there's already some work going on on that, but...
There is.
Just again, public comment on the impact that that brings to, to these kids, and then what they learn out of these pieces, so...
I appreciate you bringing that up there. So, Director Fitzgerald has been working really hard on getting the facilities down at the arena and, and some of the other, the pavilion, up, up to a higher level of acceptability. And so, I think what we will see is over time, an invest, a reinvestment in those facilities going forward. So, I think, I think you can expect to see what you are requesting.
And I, I just got on the Fair Board as well, so I think we got it.
That means all the problems are solved.
Have your number, so...
I know, I know. But I'm happy to meet with you outside of this as well, and talk and see kind of what other ideas you guys might have as well to help.
Yeah, getting, you know, more, we had a clinic this year for the first time, and I couldn't tell you how long. And so, those educational pieces, being able to be budgeted in and brought in for the, again, the livestock and the 4H shooting sports, just, again, that's my forte, so...
Yeah. And I can tell you, you know, personally, I, my family benefits, my daughter participates. I have staff members. Isaiah Hodges is one of, one of your guys, one of the best shooters, archers in, in the state, in the country. And I have the, he, privileged to work with him, so it, yes, so I, the value that is put on what is provided is, is hard to measure. And so, we thank you all.
I just want to say, a lot of that is kind of... I just want to say, a lot of that is kind of driven by the people who are on the fair board. So, so it's important that we have, I mean, you'll notice there's some, there's some people on the fair board now that, that have a 4H perspective and that makes a difference. Because it looks to me, I mean, I came in afterwards when the roof's torn off and nobody's done anything for years. And, and the focus seems to have changed from when I went to the fair, which was, you know, and, and when I went to the fair, they, my parents dropped me off and I lived in this, stayed in this kind of bunker place with some really sketchy people. But we all, we all lived through it. But, but I think that if we can refocus and get back to where, where, because all that infrastructure is really to, really to benefit, benefit kids. And, and so, like, I mean, as far as, as far as new corrals and so forth and panels, we're looking at all that. And they've got the money, so our goal is to try to get the money actually spent. So that's, that's where we're going.
Well, I'm good at spending money, so if you need a volunteer, let me know.
Ah, okay.
I did want to raise a question, please. You had mentioned both livestock and shooting archery. You gave a specific example of how we could partner on the livestock dimension. How about the shooting and the archery? What, what do you perceive there as a good path forward?
So the space. I know that the area, and again, I'm not personally involved in the 4H or the shooting sports side of it, but it's my understanding that they've had a designated area for some time, but it's not adequate as far as length or safety measures, where they're shooting from. And so I think they need a little bit more space. We need a designated area for them. I know a lot of times it's moving livestock and shooting sports and moving things around and a lot of manual labor involved in that. So if there was a designated area for them that was adequate for the national lengths that they're shooting at, when these kids are achieving these things.
And if you recall, it's, it's, it's in the corner of that livestock pavilion. It's in one, it's in one corner on the, on the, you know, on the, basically shooting across the width of the building. And it seems like we could do something else. What, if we could stop like storing vehicles, treating the livestock pavilion as a, as a storage unit, that would be a great, great start. So I was, I.
And we started working on that.
Yeah, we're working on it.
And one of the other things too, was of concern in there was, was the roof.
Yeah.
And we, and we just approved on our last meeting to move forward with doing a new roof for that, for that livestock pavilion. So being able to clean up a lot of that infrastructure and make the buildings safer all the way around will definitely help with, with that.
For everybody, I mean, for the animals, for the kids that are down there, for, you know.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I just want to say that the, the motivation for, that I can see for having turned that into a storage area was to generate short-term revenue for a, a, ultimately underfunded organization.
Correct.
So what, when you, when you're talking about, I, I think, I think that every part of this group needs to work together. Like, for example, I mean, you've got the auction group, right? You've got, there's, there's a lot of money that's traveling through the fairgrounds and that should, that should be utilized to help maintain the, the areas. We're, we're essentially talking about the same spot right there. So let's, let's work together and see, and see, you know, what I've noticed, and this is throughout Curry County and throughout probably the, the whole United States, when you're, when you're dealing with, with different groups of nonprofits, we all feel like we're doing, we're doing something for free and we're making a donation and, and, and some, and it seems like people want, they're like, it's all on the take and not the give. And really, the way that, that this thing actually works is there should be a synergy there so that we're all saying, let's all, because historically at the fairgrounds, it seems to be, we have a lot of different groups and they're all motivated, but say you're the archery people and we're like, hey, you take care of the archery, it's not what a bunch of kids are, you know, that's not, the, the fairgrounds needs to be doing the maintenance on everything. And the, and we don't need to be doing piecework agreements for, for, that, that don't get done. So I just think we all need to be aware of, of what the contributions are for everybody and that we'll end up with a really great facility. And I mean, with the money that they're dumping in to it right now, we're, it's, we are going to be back. It's going to be great.
I mean, at the end of the day, we all have the same goal.
Right.
So yes, a partnership between all the entities involved is ideal. Everybody, you know, has their priorities first, of course, but I, I think, yes, synergy is, is a great way to, to go about it. And if it's going to take, you know, a few meetings with all of the correct people in the same room to get down to it, then I, we need to get that facilitated and get that going, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, well, I would entertain a motion that will approve the budget and the tax rate for the 25, 26 fiscal year.
So moved.
I, I move to, I move that the proposed budget for the Curry County 4H and Extension Service District be approved as presented for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year and that the district be approved to impose ad valorem taxes for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year at the rate of 0.1021 per thousand dollars assessed value for operating purposes.
Elegantly put.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Great job, Margie, putting this together. I will call for the question. Commissioner Coker.
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger.
Yes.
And I as well. And, oh.
I think our committee.
Yes, as, yes, sorry, sorry. Yes.
Why am I here?
Yes, I will, continue to call for the question. Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is unanimous. We will pass this budget. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
With that, we will adjourn the meeting.